Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming this evening. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Brzaska.
Here.
All right, we're all here this evening. Move right into our public participation. The first item this evening is swearing in of Officer Christian Calderon, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'd love to just congratulate the guys for coming out and showing their support. Nice showing again. But tonight, I do have the distinct honor of introducing Montgomery's 35th Police Officer. It is Officer Christian Calderon. Christian, come on up. Christian moved to Chicago from Mexico when he was 10 years old. Worked with, went to DeVry University, graduated from there, became a Chicago Police Officer, and for the last seven years of his life, he was a Chicago Police Officer. He came to us on a transfer program. He is here tonight with his family, all seated in the row, his four children, his girlfriend, Rim. They live right here in town. Ladies and gentlemen, Christian Calderon.
All right, one raise your right hand if you'd like to make. I state your name.
I, Christian Calderon.
Just solemnly swear.
Just solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities. Thank you.
All right, Officer Calderon, thank you for coming. You can get the family home. Thank you for bringing your family, men and women in the Police Department. Thank you again for coming. I appreciate it. I'm sure he does well. And remember us. We go junior highs are remote tomorrow, and so is the high school.
High school is, Jim?
I just saw that. So he goes to Travers. My son's very excited. Because it's too hot to go to school. All right, we'll move on to the second item for public participation is the public comment period. Is there anybody here wishing to address the board on any topic? Unless you're on the agenda elsewhere. Welcome. If you could state your name and address.
My name is Margaret Stumpf. I live at 178 Hamlet Circle. I've been a resident of Montgomery for over 30 years. To my knowledge, there is no ordinance pertaining to public parking on a street for a vehicle. There's like no duration, actually. So I'm getting people from Grandview, and they're coming and parking on Hamlet Circle and just leaving their cars for a duration of one, two. There's one now in front of my house for 10 days. And they keep on leaving it there. And then they're, and then they come. And the only time they're basically, I have a clear street, is maybe in the morning, sometimes when the plows come down. But then there's cars always parked there, and the plows go around it, and nothing's done. They're not ticketed or nothing like that. So that would be something to be addressed during the wintertime. But I'm just, I mean, I need the village to get together and make a fair ordinance as to how long a vehicle can be parked on a public street. Right now, you can park a car on a public street in front of your house for 365 days. Just move it when the snow comes. I don't think that's fair. I really don't. And I know you guys can come together and address this issue. And then another issue is they are building a parking lot next to the Pickle Baller.
Yeah.
I've been advocating a park for about six months for kids around my area. My area is the Hamlet, Grandview, Lakeside, and the townhomes. The nearest park is in Briar Cliff, and that's exactly a mile away. That's not fair for no children to go out, to go to play in a, on a swing, a slide. So instead of building a park, they built a parking lot. Can you guys address something like that to make it nice for the children? They have a place to play. That's all. They can't play in the street. That's dangerous. That's why we build parks. I don't have a park. My kids around me don't have a park. If you guys would think about it, get together, talk, come up with a resolution, it's a fine community. I know you guys can come up with something. And thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And on the first item, I believe, I would hope that somebody from the Police Department or code enforcement will research and get back to you or get back to us about parking. And then the second one, I know that staff has regular communications with the Oswego Land Park District, which, because they used to live on Timberland, I grew up, same deal. We would have to walk to Briar Cliff. But I'm sure we can mention that at our next touch point with that Oswego Land Park District, just to see. I mean, if there wasn't one plan and there's no land for it, it makes it hard. But it's good feedback. It's always good to keep communicating.
Am I correct in my, in, I believe a vehicle parked on a residential street needs to be moved every two days. Is that not accurate?
Has to be operable. It's on the street, it's got to be operable. So no flat tires, it's got to be able to move.
If a vehicle is operable and it's parked in front of a residence for more than two days, I think it's got to be moved.
That was my understanding.
That was my understanding.
No, I went through this with a resident, and she's correct. There is no ordinance that I'm aware of. Unless it was recently changed. As long as, now if it's parked there and someone calls, code enforcement goes out, they can say, you need to start that car and drive it to prove it's operable. And it's not, then they've got to move it. Or if it has flat tires, it's not considered operable. They've got to repair the tires on the car. But yeah, there is not a limit for the amount of time a car can be parked on a street.
So would staff look at that and get back, get back to the resident, but then also update us as to what, what the rule is? Because I thought the same, but we don't need to read the ordinance here. Thank you. All right, hearing no others, move on from public comment. Move into the consent. We have four items. I'll read them and then entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the, of the August 12th, Village Board Accounts Payable and Summary Report for August 26th, the Refuse Report for July of '24, and Ordinance 2088 granting a special use and related variances. This is for the DCX Doc Montgomery LLC on Awkut.
Shall move?
Second.
Moved and second by Baumann. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
All right, that carries 6-0. Thank you. Items for separate action tonight. The first one is Ordinance 2087 granting a special use PUD preliminary plat of subdivision in the Village of Montgomery for D.R. Horton. And then the next ordinance is approving the final plat. So let's discuss these both at the same time. Director App, do you have anything additional to add?
The only addition we have is that we did update the completion date for the Unit One Public Improvements based on the potential for their closing date to have to be pushed back to the spring. So the new deadline would be August 31st of 2025 for them to have completed, and the village accepted the public improvements for Unit One. So that has been incorporated into the ordinance that's in your packets tonight.
Has the confusion about the utilities, has staff worked through that with petitioner that was brought up?
So, yes, so we worked with Fox Metro and have clarified some of our concerns to make sure they're specific on what we would need changed and need looked at. And so they are reviewing that currently, and we'll be moving forward with that.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
The highlight before you is for Unit Two, so that would be 71 single-family homes, and that is to the north of Unit Two. Or Unit, sorry.
Wait, 73?
Sorry, 73, correct.
Okay. Motion to approve 6A.
Second.
Go ahead, Derek.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Motion to approve 6B.
Yep. Go ahead.
6B, yeah.
Marisak.
Marisak, second by Spurling.
Yes.
And then, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes. I have a question, though, related to items 6A and 6B. So we have, Horton understands what our expectations are, the residents' expectations are for snow removal?
Yes. And then the village will make sure our expectations are noted to Hartz and do our best to make sure that if Hartz is still in control of the property during this winter, that it is plowed appropriately.
I keep wrestling with the idea of Hartz. All of this falls back on Hartz, and there's a remaining, does it make sense to call their bond? If, I, I-
For the fact that they're not plowing?
Well, but they don't have the final asphalt. They don't have a lot of things. Why would we let Hartz off the hook for, for items that aren't completed?
I don't want to speak for Horton, but I'm pretty sure that that would screw up the sale of this to Horton. They wouldn't be able to sell it then if there was a bond on it. So I think the best thing that could happen out there is this current scenario where hopefully Horton closes on it this year, and they're one of the nation's largest home builder. They'll be out there this winter making sure that the roads are up to their standards and also meet our standards.
Okay. If Hartz ever wants to come into the village again, and I'm a village board member, I'm going to say absolutely not.
I hear you. All right, moving on to item C is Resolution 2024-034 authorizing mobile food facility licenses. This is for Socorro, Nissasio, 732 Montgomery Road, Director App.
Yes, so we have another food truck that is looking to operate on the city of Montgomery Road, a little bit east of Douglas Road.
Can you turn on your mic, please?
Oh, thank you.
So we have the food truck that is looking to operate on Montgomery Road, just a little bit east of Douglas Road. He was given the application to fill out. He did not realize that he was within our corporate limits and thought he was an unincorporated area. So he has submitted his application and is requesting your consideration of giving him the license so that he can continue to operate out there. At this time, his food truck is closed, just sitting on the property.
I don't see him here this evening, since I know everybody in the audience. I don't see him. I'm just going to say what I've said for probably the last six applications. I think we have plenty of food trucks in the area, and I won't be supporting it.
Okay. Any other comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve?
Second.
The second. Any further discussion? All right, go ahead, call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
No.
Trustee Spurling.
No.
Trustee Baumann.
No.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
No.
Trustee Brzaska.
No.
Okay. And that fails one to five.
Let me explain my decision. And I had a conversation with Administrator Zoful about this today. If there are other food trucks in the area, what gives us the right to determine whether or not there can be another food truck in that area? The market needs to dictate that, not the village board. We can't, I don't think we can say, yes, you're allowed to do this, but no, you're not allowed to. I think it's ridiculous. That's why I voted for the last one. That's why I voted for this one.
Normally, I wouldn't get into this here, and we can talk about it. The only point that I would push back on, the threshold to enter the market here is, is so inexpensive that I think the market is so loose in there. You could have, if you left it wide open, you could have food trucks all the way down Montgomery Road. Clearly, you'd have them all the way down Douglas Road, because that barrier to entry is so low. You need a food truck, or some tables, and some tacos. And given that, I think is one of the only reasons why, at least in this room, we've taken sort of a proactive approach to say, like, we got a bunch of businesses on both of these streets. We've tested the waters with this new market system, and we're really kind of edging into that over the last several years.
I understand that. But if you're going to, when, when the existing food trucks that we've got, they come in to renew their licenses, why would we renew their licenses? It doesn't make sense. I mean, there's, there's no, you, just like what happened with over by Walmart, you, it's not the village board's job to determine which business is going to be successful and which is not. If we're talking about the fact that they're pulling business away from brick and mortar stores, we shouldn't have let any food trucks come into town. We don't get to determine who's successful and who's not.
So one of my concerns is, and I had this conversation with Director App earlier today, we just approved a food truck court right here in the same region. How are they ever going to draw anybody to join their food truck court when there's 12 of them down Montgomery Road? The whole idea of buying the court was to create a space for them to be and draw an audience. If we continue to approve everybody all the way down Montgomery Road, they're never going to draw anybody to their food court, because it's already saturated. The market's saturated. So that's, that's why I'm a no. And again, I'm also, we're to the point where, when is enough enough? When is enough enough? Because we have a lot of them. And again, we have a lot of them competing against, and the threshold is very low. They don't need grease traps. They don't need ANSO systems. They don't pay property taxes. How does the brick and mortar guy stay open, who's paying property taxes, to compete against the guy who just pulls up in his truck and leaves? So, and we created the food truck court specifically for a densely populated area of those food trucks. So you had a variety right there in the food truck court. And it's a little stalled, but we can definitely help guide these folks to that person to look to open there.
I don't care if we eliminate all the food trucks in the village, or we allow food trucks in the village. It makes no difference to me. What makes a difference to me is that we're consistent about it, and right now, we're not. That's my issue.
What take?
Well, we, we take a stance on location based on gaming, slots, if you want to say market's going to dictate. Well, why not let anybody put up a facility with gaming, regardless of the location? Right? I mean, it's the same, you're comparing free market, but yet we determine what we feel would be an appropriate location, or how many that we would like to have in this town. How is a food truck any different?
How is an automotive location any different?
And we could probably devolve this into lots of things. I do appreciate your point on both sides of things. This continues to come up with a few specific types of uses in town. There are ones that I think many of our residents are split on, whether they would like to see more video gaming, or more food trucks, or more automotives. And the reality is, if you had, if there is zero say in it, or zoning, then certain businesses would just go anywhere, anywhere you, anywhere they would like to go and capture any little chunk of the market, even if it meant undercutting everybody else along the way, so they can get their share. So.
And one thing I did just want to distinguish is this is more similar to how we approach liquor licensing, where you're creating a license for the food trucks that there's none available. So it is different than like the automotive use, where they don't necessarily, they're not applying for a license. So this, I would say, is most similar to liquor licensing, but of course, your point is taken.
The, I'm willing to go along with whatever the village board wants to do, right? If we're, but we're going to be consistent about it. When, so if we're a no on food trucks, when the existing food trucks come up for relicensing, I'm going to vote no, even if it's existing, just to be consistent.
I would point out, I personally have been consistent. I don't know, the last six requests, maybe, six, five, six requests. I think after our first two licenses were established, I was pretty much a no. I'd really have to go back and look at everything. But I have been consistent about my feeling that I don't particularly care to have the food trucks right next to our brick and mortar.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to item D. Tonight is Resolution 2024-036, adopting the Village of Montgomery Engineering Design and Inspection Policy Manual. There better be a PowerPoint.
Sorry to disappoint you. There will be no PowerPoint. But we have-
Engineers were not involved in this decision.
Clearly. There is no agenda specifically for this item. We will just be telling you that we have finally finalized our engineering design manual. All the certificates have been updated. Details have been updated. Public, I think Public Works and EI for putting that all together. So we do have it ready for official adoption. Any changes that are needed to be made to it will be able to be made administratively per the resolution that adopts this ordinance. But we will be able to post this on our website and have it for our developers, et cetera, to be able to access as they're trying to figure out what is needed to develop in Montgomery.
Motion, Steve?
Yeah.
Second.
I've got a question.
Just for the record, though, motion and a second. Go ahead.
So I, I read through this, and I do have a specific question. I see this is throughout the document in certain areas. When it comes to easement, in a state, the village shall have no obligation with respect to surface restoration, including but not limited to the lawn or shrubbery, provided however that the village shall be obligated, following maintenance work to stabilize all surfaces in any manner suitable to the village, so as to retain suitable drainage, to remove all excess debris and spoil, and to leave the maintenance area in generally clean and workmanlike condition. So the way I read that, and especially out West, so everybody has easements in their side yard and their backyard, and there's utilities running through a moor or their front yard. So if the village comes in and they have to make a repair, basically, they're just going to level it off and leave it, and it's up to the homeowner to restoration that. To put in black dirt, to reseed it. That's, that's the way I'm reading this. And like I said, it's, it's throughout the document.
Yeah, so that provision was developed for, specifically for fire loops in the industrial areas. I don't think we broadly apply it, Trustee Guyer. So in other words, what we encountered after there was a change in the law where any fire loop became a public, part of the public system, we ended up going under concrete pavement, you know, maybe just very extensive landscaping. And because we felt like going onto that private property and restoring that, an industrial or commercial property, just wasn't appropriate. That's why that language was developed, so that would limit the village's responsibility there. We've kind of now transcended that by using our check valves and backflow preventers to allow those lines to be private, so we don't have that issue any longer. But that's a bit of a remnant of that. And if we ever do have to put a water main on an industrial property, I think we would still include it in the language. It wasn't intended to be used in residential neighborhoods, and it hasn't been to my knowledge. So that's kind of where we're at on that. So.
Because I know we've always, if we tore up somebody's yard, we've always replaced it and repaired it. You know, it's, the old joke is, well, when we get done, you won't even know we were here. But I, like I said, it's throughout the document, water main, drainage, easement provisions. So I just want to make sure that that's not the intent, is that we're going to tear up somebody's yard or the ride away and leave it up to them to make-
The specific intent for that section was to handle fire loops, really.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, there's been a motion in this second. If there's no other discussion, go ahead, call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
6-0. Thank you. All right, E, tonight is Requested Approval for Change Order for 43,707 over the awarded contract value of 299,980 for Waterwell Solutions LLC, well number three rehab. Engineer Wallace.
Thank you, President. From Riley, this evening, we're requesting approval of a balancing change order for the well number three rehabilit, well rehabilitation. As you can see from the handout or from the enclosure in the packet, there is a number of items that were adjusted throughout the project, whether it's, you know, reusing pipe, or not having to buy pipe, or rethreading pipe, all that sort of thing. The main reason for the addition, though, was the having to replace the motor. So unfortunately, you know, we had hoped to reuse the motor, but once the mercury seal was determined to be damaged, then that option is off the table. The new regulations require us to, we can't repair the mercury seal like we had in the past. So, you know, that's an unfortunate circumstance. But even with that, we were able to get the well back online and moving forward. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of-
So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move and second. Go ahead.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman? Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Carry six oh, thank you.
I have a question. Um, and I only ask this because I'm running into this in the contracts that I run into all the time now. Does the village have a standard, uh, overhead and profit that it will allow for change orders?
When we pr- process, um, um, time and material, um, we generally file, follow the IDOT procedure for contracting, and I'd have to go look at the current manual, um, but there is an amount that we generally use, which the industry uses. I can't remember the amount for it, if you do, Chris?
Yeah. Uh, so Trustee Youngerman, it, it depends on, for, for labor, you're allowed a thirty-five percent markup on top of your labor. Uh, materials is a fifteen percent markup, and, um, machine is ten percent, and any subcontract work is ten percent.
Then I'm, I'm interested to know why in the contracts I sign on change orders, I'm only allowed five percent overhead and five percent profit, and why we're not adopting the same situation?
Um, we, we, industry standard, at least in, like I said, in IDOT standard specs, is that's what it is, and, um, that's generally what's been followed, um, at least in, in our trade, I would say.
Are they, is, when they provide, are they providing costs and things associated with these change orders and backup?
So in this contract, mo- a lot of it was, um, items that were bids who were using the same bid item, so there's no argument. And then generally, we'll get, uh, if it's outside the scope of the contract, we'll get an agreed price letter or agree to the price. So we don't necessarily always follow that force account work methodology that Chris just did. So, 'cause we'll know what the market is for certain things. So I guess we, we try to use it to the village's advantage, but on IDOT work, that's generally how it's processed. On our work, we either try to get it through the unit prices that we bid or do some sort of an agreed price letter.
Yeah, and you, you can do agreed unit prices with IDOT, so that's a one-up method. If you, if you don't like the AUP, the alternative is to do the time and materials. And if we do the time and materials, yes, we require detailed backup of the hours that you worked, the rates with the certified payroll proving that you're paying those people, you know, the, the invoices for your materials from your supplier, the, um, equipment watch sheets that show the FHWA rate for all of that, and we go through all of that to make sure that it matches up with the hours that they were supposed to be using, you know, that we double-checked in the field, basically.
I, I spend so much of my time going through this paperwork. Process, I think is a nice word for it, where they only allow five percent overhead and five percent profit. And you can't run a company on five percent overhead and five percent profit. But if other people are doing it to me and other municipalities are doing it to me, I'm gonna make sure that if they're starting to adopt these procedures, that we're going to do that for the village as well.
It's something we can look into.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of a way broader conversation on, you know, the work or where you are and whatnot before we start. I think following, at least following the IDOT standard is probably something that everybody around here, at least for our work, is used to accommodating. All right, so that was, uh, that was E, and that carried six zero. Uh, the second one, or the next one is F, approval of a PSA with EEI in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand nine eighty-four for the twenty-twenty-five MFT Infrastructure Road Program Design Engineering, Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Prawley. So you mentioned that, uh, this is the PSA for twenty-twenty-five's IRP MFT year. Uh, so we'll be looking to move forward with the streets that were identified in the pavement management study, which was, uh, approved by the village board at the July twenty-second meeting earlier this year. Um, some few areas, uh, that'll be covered this year will be mostly in Blackberry Crossing West and Belmaray. Uh, again, I wanted to mention, this is an MFT year, so we do wanna get this in front of the board sooner than later. Uh, the review process through IDOT takes a little bit longer, so we wanna make sure that we can still hit our targeting, uh, date for bidding sometime in February. So, if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thanks, Mark. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
I carry six zero, thank you. Uh, item G, award of a contract to Mohawk, mo- sorry, Mohawk Carpet Distribution in the amount of fifty-seven thousand eight nineteen and forty-five cents for the replacement of the police department's main corridor flooring, Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Prawley. So the board may recall, we've been doing several projects, um, at the police department facility over the last few years, um, cosmetic things such as painting, carpeting, um, and other items. Uh, one of the things that we identified in our evaluation of the building, uh, in over the years, was this main corridor section that is heavily traveled. Um, the flooring in that current area is met its life expectancy. Um, so we're looking to move forward with a different type of product. Uh, we've been working with the Mohawk Distribution rep, uh, is more of a commercial grade, higher mill, uh, gonna hold up to the traffic much better. And through that process, we're able to utilize our source well procurement process as well as for the installation process of that. So, uh, meets our state requirements for bidding, uh, allows us to move forward with this product. So, uh, we're looking to get that work started as soon as possible to try to beat the winter and get that underway for the police department. So if there's any questions from the board, I am happy to answer them at this time.
I have a couple of questions for you. Is this the first time we're probably seeing the flooring over at the police department?
It is not. So if you recall, two years ago, we did the main lobby, uh, area out front. Uh, we've re-carpeted areas such as investigations, as well as the community room. Um, so again, you know, the building's, at that point, uh, much like Village Hall, where a lot of smaller areas are trying to be addressed, especially like this high-traffic area. I mean, that's the main corridor for patrol, administration, and all of, you know, the functionalities of the police department, so.
And, uh, so what would you say has been the lifespan of this, uh, the VCT? What's the difference in the lifespan?
So the difference in the lifespan, um, is probably somewhat similar, twenty, twenty-five years, somewhere in that range. The huge difference between the VCT and the LVT, um, is going to be, uh, the maintenance in between. So the VCT requires, uh, like what we have here at Village Hall with the terrazzo floors, cleaning and polishing more often, whereas, uh, what this flooring is, the LVT, is more durable and requires basically no maintenance. Um, and what maintenance it is, is much faster than the process of, uh, what we do here. We went with a very, very similar, almost exact same product, um, as what we did the lobby with. So again, we're, we're continuing that throughout the building, and it's also basically the exact same product that we use throughout Public Works because it's the most durable floor with the least amount of maintenance.
Okay, so you, you kinda touched on my next two questions. Um, so we do have this VCT here at Village Hall, did you say that?
Oh, I'm sorry, we do not, not here.
We do not?
No.
So that was not used here?
No, we have terrazzo here.
And it was not used in our new Public Works building?
No, ma'am.
Correct?
Absolutely not.
That's what I needed to know, thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
I carry six zero. All right, last one is Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero-three-five, authorizing participation as a member in the Illinois Emergency Management Mutual Aid System response pursuant to an IGA for the establishment of a mutual aid intergovernmental service agreement. Nailed it. Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. What you have in front of you is a request to enter into, uh, a resolution for mutual aid from the Illinois Emergency Management Agency. We have something very similar on the law enforcement side called ILEAS that we signed into years ago. This resolution would get us the ability to request certain resources in a time of disaster. Uh, right now, the only ones that we have an agreement with is Kane County. This would allow us to get resources from everyone in the state, every community in the state that signs onto this agreement. We're just trying to get ahead of the ballgame here. Any questions?
So this is similar to, um, my cousin works for the state, and when that tornado hit Utica a few years ago, they sent dispatched workers and trucks down to Utica to help, that's what this is.
Exactly what this for, yes, sir.
It mobilizes a few, a few pieces of equipment from multiple agencies so everybody can continue to function.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Move to approve. Trustee Spurling? Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
I carry six to zero, thanks, Chief. Uh, we don't have anything for discussion, anything new or unfinished?
Uh, register for River Run and watch for Halloween Safety Event, October twelfth, Saturday this year.
Any questions to the short event there on September twenty-first? There's also a river cleanup for Rotary, if anybody is interested in joining.
And also, uh, a big thank you to staff and everyone involved, um, for the recent Montgomery Fest. It was a, a great event, and the amount of hours and time and blood, sweat, and tears that staff puts into this, um, is, it's, sitting where I sit, um, is an amazing feat to see everybody come together. So, again, thank you to everybody for, for your help with putting that on.
Perfect. All right. Uh, with that, you can see our next meeting is, uh, September ninth in this room at seven PM. Uh, would entertain a motion to go into executive session, uh, for two purposes, which is, what's that? Oh, three purposes under two headings, uh, which is to discuss litigation where it finds it's probable or imminent. That's, uh, five ILCS, one twenty over two C eleven, and then a discussion of, uh, acquisition of real property. And then the second one is to review the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Move, second, and we will be back, go ahead, call the roll.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Thank you.
It has twenty-four hours on the street parking.
I do see.
Cause one time, my uncle, I put his car on the street when he was in prison. My, my uncle's car, he was, he was in prison, and I put it on the street, and it totally got him.
It's twenty-four hours. It's linked in with a bunch of other stuff, though, in that section. Like, it says a whole bunch of other things you can't park on the street with.
And, and all he would really legally have to do is just move it.
Yeah.
But just the act of doing it would be annoying enough to not do that. Just to force it all along. Going down, getting tired.
Original. That hurts. So, yeah, so. Full hop.
Can I ask if I can? I don't, I'm upset, I shouldn't have. I'm not gonna say, you know, like, why, what, and, 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 and.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't want to.
Oh, it's a teenager's style. Are those are teenagers? Are they bad?
No. They're just.
But it's.
But actually, they like.
It's like crazy. I mean, in a little sort of way. Wasn't it a toy, it was a toy.
Not really.
Okay.
All right.
Whatever.
Well, it's, it's a hot wash.
I mean, that, it's. I thought it was a green. I mean, not that I'm telling you what to do. As long as the human. Like, either you need a point in this. You need to do better than avoiding that, it's, you know. But, you just. Any of us, I think it needed. I mean, and not me.
So I think that it's, uh, we are still.
But now, well, it was a plumber's, um, proper plumber's. Proper plumber's entry, and like, and now.
Is it a plumber's entry?
No.
And it's like a walk through?
Gee, you have a lot of.
Yeah.
You start asking, I mean, you'll have a, but there's.
We didn't do it when we converted it into a regular pantry. Cause my wife's a little dick, it was a story. Granted, we got a three-thousand square foot house, it's just my wife.
You can't three houses work for a house, you're doing it.
Yes.
Only benefits it. The dog had one, so I wanted.
No, we had, we had one.
Paul, I'm bringing back to order and ask our attorney for a summary of closed session.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we are reporting back regarding the review of executive session minutes, and at this time, we'd be looking for a motion to, um, release the two-twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four minutes regarding the last executive session review, the minutes from ten seventeen twenty-two, uh, oh four twenty, twenty-one, and oh one twenty-seven, twenty-one, all regarding, uh, the employment of an employee.
So moved.
Go ahead, call the roll.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Six to zero, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Go ahead.
Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
And merger?
Thank you.